Welcome to the regular town council meeting, town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Monday, October 2nd, 2023. Tonight, we will start with the roll call, please.
Councilmember Ogerton. Councilmember Bunch. Councilmember Elkomah. Councilmember McGuire. Councilmember Rhodes. Vice Mayor Royer. Mayor Morris.
Page of latest, please. I will lead us.
I. The United States of America and to the Republic who wishes saints, one nation under God in this law.
Public announcements, here is. At the IMA or ICMA. ICMA meeting, town managers, texted her today and she said she's hard at work recruiting. And I'd just like to compliment her again on working on a smooth transition. Our recruiter has been engaged and is on the job and working. And we're looking for a, to have a new town manager onboard in the January, February timeframe. In time for budget objective setting and to be in normal flow of business for next year. Other public announcements from council?
I have one. I was contacted by a local resident who is concerned about traffic safety issues in the neighborhood around Stagecoach Village as they exit Stagecoach Village onto taking a left onto Cave Creek Road in particular. And I would like to suggest that that area be included in our traffic study. Because I agree with him frankly, that there's a new apartment complex that's going to be built back there. And Stagecoach Village is increasing in its tenants and therefore activity back there. In fact, Taste of Cave Creek is happening there in a couple of weeks. So I would, I would, I would like to see that happen and I hope I get your support for that.
Other, other announcements?
I've heard similar complaints.
Me too. He's covering the waterfront.
Me too.
So is that a yes that we could get that?
Well, I, we can't discuss it.
We've gone far beyond just a comment. So now I think what we got to do there is you should ask the manager.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
Very good. Have. Yeah. Other.
Short comment.
Notes.
Just I'm glad to see in last week's town manager report, the request for informational meeting and public dialogue regarding the state trust lands is in the pipeline. That's awesome. As well as the piece from Shippo, this history lunch from downtown to come and do a presentation to us about our history and the economic benefits that, that we can realize.
Other announcements? Call to the public.
No input for this item, Mayor.
I'm sorry, didn't hear.
We have none.
Okay. You've got a very deep voice on that microphone. My hearing is not very good. Town manager report from the assistant or deputy town manager, Teresa.
All right. Well, I just have a reminder that the Foothills Food Bank groundbreaking ceremony is this Thursday at 9:00 AM. And that's at the 4,300 East Carefree Highway address. And then this past Saturday, September 30th, the spur cross helicopter landing pad was utilized. It was utilized to transport a patient that was found in the desert in of Yavapai County. And our automatic aid partners coordinated with MCSO and Daisy Mountain Fire and Medical to transfer the patient to Daisy Mountain for their care. And then they transported the patient to ER. So our communication amongst MCSO and Daisy Mountain, as well as the automated, automatic aid partners is continuing to improve. And so with every incident that they, they have, so.
I have one question.
I'm not, can we, we can really can't have questions, Karen?
Stan asked. You can, if I have the answer, I will.
I was just going to say for the event this Thursday morning.
Oh, yes.
The postcard said that there's not a lot of parking and that there are shuttles to the location. I'm hoping that there might be some kind of coordinated carpooling for the council.
I will get back to you guys with that tomorrow morning.
Very good. Thank you.
And I don't have anything else at this time.
Okay, very good. Action items on the, we have a consent agenda item tonight. Does anybody need to have that pulled from the agenda? Consent? No. Hearing none, look for motion on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Seven zero. On the general agenda tonight is one item. Council discussion approval to utilize the Arizona State, the Arizona State Cooperative Purchasing Contract CTR 046098 through ParaSoft Technology Corporation to purchase OpenGov budgeting and planning software to include deployment and implementation of professional services in an amount up to $161,803 over a three-year contract term and authorize the mayor and staff to execute that required contract, the required contract documents presented by the finance director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before I get to that item, I would quickly just like to introduce Bridgette Black since she's here tonight. This, she's my accounting manager and my right hand. And she's very hardworking and dedicated and I'm super grateful and thankful to have her on staff. So I know some of you have probably seen her, some of you have met her, some of you haven't, but I just wanted to introduce her since she was here tonight.
We're expecting big things after that introduction.
Okay. So I am here tonight to request council consideration and approval to purchase OpenGov budgeting and planning software and the implementation services for this product. I also have on Zoom tonight with us Brandon Cook from OpenGov and he will be doing a short portion of this presentation with me as well this evening. I'm going to start by giving some brief background on our current town budget process and its preparation and the challenges that we've faced. Me specifically over the last year, but in general over the history of preparing the budget here at the town of Cave Creek. And then I'll turn it over to Brandon who will give just a quick short overview of OpenGov and what it can do for the town. So I've got up on this first slide, our current challenges and processes that we are facing. For the current challenge number one that's listed there, the finance department facilitates and manages the budget process for the town. And this process for many years has included complicated linked Microsoft Excel workbooks and Word documents. It begins, our process begins with finance uploading all of our historical and current data from the town's accounting system into these linked spreadsheets. And from there, we send out those spreadsheets to the department directors to enter their current year estimated actuals to date and their budget proposals for the upcoming year. Once the department directors have completed those spreadsheets, those individual spreadsheets, those spreadsheets come back to finance where we then have to key them a second time into these linked workbooks that are. They break easy, the links break easy, changes aren't quickly and easily processed through them. It, the process, the manual process requires a lot of duplicate entry and increases the probability for errors and requires heavy involvement by one single member of the finance department due to the inability of the workbooks to be shared. Which leads us into our current challenge number two on the screen, which is the process prevents multiple users from working collaboratively together on the budget at the same time. With the linked spreadsheet, only one user can be involved at any point in time, leaving only one or two key finance department employees who can work and understand the, the complex spreadsheets that produce the annual budget. Which leads us into current challenge number three, which is should something happen to Bridgette or myself? It would not be possible for someone to easily step in and pick up that work and move forward, move the budget forward. Which leads us to also number, our challenge number four, which is the inability to make easy changes or adjustments to the budget as it moves through the approval process. Each change has to be manually keyed into the department spreadsheet tracked and balanced all the way through to ensure nothing is missing, nothing got, none of the links got broken. Things are appearing in the budget document as they should be. And the last challenge that we face that I wanted to present tonight is challenge number five, which is it takes an additional 360 staff hours for Bridgette and I together to produce and prepare the, the budget. That 360 hour staff hours is over an 18-week budget preparation period. I did a estimated monetary value of these hours that were worked and it equated to about $41,400 to produce the budget. Those additional hours, as indicated, are above our normal 40-hour plus work weeks as salaried employees over that 18-week period. Staff believes the amount of data, time and work involved in creating the linked spreadsheets and balancing to ensure nothing is missing has reached a point where specialized software to create the annual budget and capital plan is necessary. Purchase of an integrated budget software will help automate and streamline the budget preparation and production process and significantly reduce the number of additional manual hours required by only two finance staff members. Staff has reviewed as part of our, as part of the, looking at the budget products that are available. We looked at three different budget software products that provided both an operational and a capital budget. We staff reviewed and participated in demonstrations of all three of those software products, their features, benefits of each. And we identified OpenGov as a quality product that was easy to use and navigate and met the town's needs, processes and workflows. The advantages of OpenGov are presented here on the next slide and include the financial integration with the town's current Casell accounting software system, which eliminates the need for data to be manually keyed into the system. It's a, it has a user-friendly interface and is a collaborative working environment that would allow all of the department directors to be into the system. They can enter their estimated actuals through the end of the year, put in their proposed budgets for the upcoming year. They can, everyone can be on the system at the same time, working together and collaboratively to get it done. Thus eliminating the duplicate entry required with the back and forth and back to finance into the single spreadsheet. Number three, OpenGov provides ease of budget changes completed throughout the process and that it captures and automatically updates all the information in all applicable areas in the budget. Because it's computer-driven, it's designed to do that without having to have to manually go in and check each individual place to make sure stuff gets updated. The fourth benefit of OpenGov that I have identified on the slide is it drives financial transparency to increase trust and community engagement with our community and residents. The fifth item is the time savings of 360-plus hours during the budget season, the 18-week period. And the sixth benefit is the interactive and configurable online budget book. Currently, the budget that the town of Cave Creek produces each year is just a paper budget book. OpenGov has an online budget platform that allows an interactive online view of the budget where individuals can get on, there's a dropdown menu. They can look at the organization chart, they can go and look at different department budgets, they can drill into the details of those budgets both on the operational side and on the capital side. So that would be a new feature for the town of Cave Creek that we haven't had in the past, but I believe is a great communication tool for the town to be able to communicate with our residents and community to see what we're doing. So with that, I'm going to quickly throw this to Brandon Cook with OpenGov who is on Zoom to join us to cover the next couple of slides about OpenGov.
Fantastic. Thanks. Thank you, Mitzi. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Fantastic. Good evening, Mayor Morris, Vice Mayor Royer and members of council. It's a pleasure to be here with you all this evening and it's a great honor to have this opportunity to speak in front of all of you. By way of introduction, my name is Brandon Cook. I'm an account executive here with OpenGov. I service our Arizona markets as well as some of these surrounding states for small and medium-sized governments leading similar conversations in an effort to modernize some of our mission critical processes in the back of our, in the back of that house. In front of you today, I have a little bit of information on OpenGov as Mitzi said, I'll go ahead and dive into that here in a moment. Before I do, I wanted to just take a moment to extend my, my gratitude to the town's finance director Mitzi and her staff in the finance department. They've been incredible with their collaboration, they're very thoughtful on investment of time and just really through their due diligence of this all through this entire valuation. Up to this point, we spent nearly 10 hours together getting to know the, the back office and inner workings of, of the town of Cave Creek. And we're very excited for the potential opportunity to really help you again, modernize such a critical process. So as such, here in front of us, in relation to OpenGov, we are a cutting-edge GovTech organization out of California here in the Bay Area with a very simple mission. That mission is to power a more effective and accountable government. We do no business for the private sector. Everything we do and everything we have is purpose-built for governments by government and we do business in all 50 states and US territories. And if you were to ask our customers from coast to coast, you know, why they partner with OpenGov or why they make strategic investments with OpenGov? I think you'd find there are three resonating themes that tend to come back, the first of which, right, being truly, truly modern cloud technology. What we have is called multi-tenant cloud software as a service. And really what that boils down to is gone are the days of having to have on-prem services and gone are the days of having to worry about, is my team truly on the best version of what's out there? Do we need to worry about an upgrade in a few years? Those aren't words in OpenGov's vocabulary. All of our enhancements get released to all of our customers using the same suite at the same time at no additional cost. So truly best-in-breed, scalable and an appreciating asset at that. In the center, ease of use. You know, you'll hear the, the, the term coined consumer grade and that's something that we really take to heart here at OpenGov. Really trying to deliver an easy-to-use intuitive and modern design. This is how we're able to drive usage adoption across not just department and thought leaders, but also again, additional users. It's part of our unlimited user model that comes with any and all of our solutions. And on the far right-hand side, true partnership. Again, we really like to think of ourselves as just that, a partner, not just a vendor. Again, it's, it's what we do as we go through the discovery with all of our potential new customers and clients and partners. But then also that is very evident in the approach that we take to our professional services team and our scope of work and what we do through deployment and beyond to really make sure all of our customers are set up for success. Mitzi, going to jump forward. Oh, thank you. You're surrounded by an incredible community. Again, across the United States, we have over 1,750 customers. Budgeting and planning is a big piece of what OpenGov does, but not all of it. And on the left-hand side of this slide, I wanted to give you some other names and familiar logos you might recognize as other communities around you are using OpenGov in similar or different fashions. And on the right-hand side, some customers of ours in the state of Arizona who are using us for budgeting and planning. Tina, our finance director at Kingman, Arizona, we work very closely with Kevin and Mark and the budget team at the town of 10B. Catherine at the county of Yavapai, Kirsten at Cottonwood and so on. And I'm sure again, you, you might have many friends at these locations as well. So you're in great company. A little bit of what's under the hood here at OpenGov, what you're seeing is what we call our OpenGov Cloud. Again, we're the only software truly cloud-built ERP solution built strictly for government. On the far left-hand side, of course, is our budgeting and planning suite. That's kind of popped out in front of us there. But there's more behind the scenes as well. We do offer a full end-to-end procurement solution from solicitation development all the way through to managing contracts. We have our own ERP offering. We have a financial suite there in the center with our core financials offering. We have an asset management suite, definitely one of our most feature-rich solutions, an incredible way to manage town infrastructure and assets. And on the far right-hand side, permitting, licensing and code enforcement, a very, very powerful workflow management tool as well. All of that is underpinned by reporting and transparency, going back to our roots as an organization over a decade and, and change ago. Really powering our local governments to take advantage of their data and really deliver on those mission critical services as best they can. When we speak about budgeting and planning, there are really four core areas that we look at and all of which here would be something that would be a part of the package as proposed in front of you this evening. Starting with operating budget, capital planning, workforce planning, and then of course, the interactive online budget book, which I'll get into here in just a second. Starting with the operating budget, as Mitzi had said, really giving collaborative tools to drive and automate strategic processes. So for operating budget and capital planning, how are we able to do all this collaborating and all this work in solution in a collaborative environment, not having to worry about breaking Excel links or working in different budget documents, but having true standard operating procedures across departments in a really easy way. Again, that's all integrated together. The capital planning, again, being able to prioritize, plan and really promote the town's biggest investments. You know, as part of that reporting and transparency platform I had mentioned, the ability to be able to publish online different pieces of data as it relates to maybe strategic priorities or other investments that are being made, letting our residents know what we're doing and how, again, our team is hard at work serving them best. Workforce planning, simply put, how are we able to plan for our most important asset, which really is and always will be our people? And then last but not least, online budget book. Again, how can we create a truly interactive and native integrated budget book where we can allow folks of the community as well as internal stakeholders to quickly navigate all the various components of that large document as well as of course, being able to be submitted for GFOA award distinguishment as well. And with that being said, what we have left here is a billing table, kind of giving the breakdown of some of the cost proponents of this solution in front of you today. And Mitzi, I'll go ahead and pass things back to you if you'd like to speak to this a little bit more.
Okay, so this would be a three-year contract with the town and OpenGov. Year one includes a prorated annual cost of the $32,217. And it also includes $37,000 for professional services for implementation costs. And what that implementation cost comprises is OpenGov provides their staff to come in to and work with the town to upload our chart of accounts, get everything established, set up, all historical information input from our, our history balanced. Set us up to track, get all of our directors trained to input, our staff trained to use the product. And moving forward in years two and three, that would comprise the annual cost of the software only. So the $37,000 in implementation cost is a one-time cost to get the software in and up and running with OpenGov doing the heavy lifting of that process. Brandon, anything to add on that?
Yeah, the only thing I would add on to that, Mitzi, is when it comes to our implementation side or really what we like to call here at OpenGov, our professional services. We took a fundamentally different approach to setting our customers up for success through transition. Throughout the conversations that I've had with Mitzi and the team, we've included my Director Solutions Consulting, his name is Mark Welch. He's the former administrative services director at the city of Ashland, Oregon and finance director at the city of Capitola here in California. And we've worked very closely together on building a project plan that includes resources from our side to really take the heavy lifting off of the finance team here at the town of Cave Creek. We understand that there are, you know, deadlines as far as capital plans go later this year and some things in the early spring of 2024. And our team has built a project plan to ensure things are going to get done in a timely manner and as well as making sure the team is set up for long-term success as well. So that's what's reflected there in that $37,000 and change number.
And so if software is approved by council this evening, OpenGov would get started right away. So to get working on at least the capital side of things. Since that's the piece that we start our budget process with to roll that out so we could be able to use that for this upcoming budget cycle in November. So with that, there's any questions that
Question.
myself or Brandon may be able to answer?
So I do have a question. You, the 41,000 that you cited, 40,000, whatever it is that you cited, that doesn't include the director's time having to go back and, and re, free input and recheck and all the rest of that, right?
Yeah, the 41,000.
Just you guys.
It's just Bridgette and yeah.
Okay.
This finance staff.
Could you go back to the last slide, please?
The cost.
Under year one, what's NAS, NASPO?
So NASPO is the state cooperative agreement that we are purchasing under. And so the 45,000 in red that's listed there, that is the amount that was the co-op with the state of Arizona. That's the contracted rate. We're getting a less expensive amount. OpenGov had given us a 15% discount. And then in addition to the 15% discount over year one, two and three for year one, that's a prorated amount for nine months since we won't be starting until second quarter of the fiscal year. That's a nine-month proration.
Very good. Thank you.
I have a question. Are we aware of any communities that have enlisted their services that have not continued with their services?
I am not aware of any communities. I've only spoken with state of Arizona communities and that has not, I've not had any, heard any complaints or had any problems. Brandon, I don't know.
Yeah.
What's outside of Arizona that you might know of?
Yeah, at least within the state of Arizona, council member, I'm not aware of anybody in, in that regard. Personally, I do have a colleague as well who services some of the large municipalities in the state. With that being said, again, we, we, we invest very heavily in the implementation and the professional service side of our deployment. And again, that's, that's in our effort to truly make sure we're setting our, our customers up for success and we're very proud of that.
Thank you.
Brandon, how long has Yavapai County been a user of the product?
Fantastic question. I believe they've been a, a customer of ours now for a few years. I'm not familiar with the exact date. That was in a, an account that was worked with a colleague of mine, Mr. Greg Keeney.
Thank you.
Do I have a, you have another one?
No.
I have, I have a couple of questions. You say in there that it's cloud only. Have you had any intrusions into your systems?
No. So when it comes to our budgeting and planning suite, we partner with industry-best service providers. In this case, it's Amazon Web Services and data is both encrypted, both in transit and at rest. So we rely on that service provider to make sure that our, our customers' data is safe and we're very happy to announce that we haven't had any discrepancies as of late.
Yeah, the, the risk I'm looking for is where someone gets into your system, then they encrypt your data that's been encrypted, double encryption. And then they want a ransom. How, how do you protect against that? What, what assurances is in the contract, let's put it that way, against that kind of thing happening?
Yeah, council member, I'd have to refer to the terms that are in our general terms and conditions and also in, in our MSA. At the time that I've been here with Open Gov, we've never experienced any sort of data breach or, or incident of that kind. But our team does have a disaster recovery plan in place and part of our SOC two requirements that we're also going through right now is also something that's been in conversation. I could also follow up with Mitzi after the call as well.
Are you using GovCloud? The Amazon GovCloud instances?
Not that I'm aware of.
All right.
I guess the, the final thing I have, i- is there anything stored at, at our site? For example, what, what is, do you use, only use Amazon Web Services backups or do you store on, at the local site, local data at the local site? And how many data centers is this spread across?
Fantastic question. Well, as part of the security measures as Amazon Web Services is concerned, the exact number of their geo redundant data centers is not disclosed. I'm not familiar with that number, but the data is not something that is stored on site. Of course, the data that's in the system, whether that's something that's accessible through budgeting and planning. Directly being stored on Amazon Web Services is the town's data, it can be accessed, downloaded at any time, should you feel a, a redundant copy is necessary. But all of that data is stored in the cloud and that's part of it being able to be accessed from anywhere on any device with the proper credentials.
Do you have multiple data centers?
That is correct, council member. Amazon Web Services uses geo redundant centers, meaning they have multiple data centers across the United States with redundant copies of that data to prevent any sort of damage.
If there are no other questions, we'll have public comment?
David Phelps?
Thank you for inviting me up here to speak. One word I think covers the my feelings towards this. Bravo. This is so top of the line, out of the park, Bravo, really, really impressed. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps.
No other speakers, Mayor?
Okay, at this point then we are ready for a motion before we start the comments.
I'll make the motion.
Motion to approve the utilization of the Arizona State Cooperative Purchasing Contract CTR zero four six zero nine eight. Through Carisoft Technology Corporation to purchase Open Gov budgeting and planning software. To include deployment and implementation of professional services in an amount up to one hundred and sixty one thousand eight hundred and three dollars. Over a three year contract term and authorize the mayor and staff to, to execute the required contract documents.
Council member?
Second.
Surprise.
Okay, so we'll have, we'll have comments, Vice Mayor, comments?
This is incredible, as I agree with Mr. Phelps and a long time coming. We, we owe a huge debt of gratitude to the current staff for working as hard as they have on the budget and it's been a spectacular product. And now it can hopefully be even better. So good luck using this software, we're very grateful that you found it.
Thank you.
The second.
So this was one of the complaints that I had about the budget process that we went through last time. And I think it's spectacular that you, you followed through and you've got good software. I think it's way overdue.
Thank you.
And absolutely awesome.
Thank you.
Other comments? I think I echo everyone else's opinion here and I want to say it's a compelling presentation to council. My congratulations on that and there's an estimate of savings in there. Thank you. Keep it up. Okay, with that, this is financial, so we'll take a roll call vote.
Council member Bunch?
Yes.
Council member Elkema?
Yes.
Council member McGuire?
Yes.
Council member Rhodes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Roy?
Yes.
Council member Augerton? Mayor Morris?
Aye. The ayes have it seven zero, you've got your cloud or cloud.gov? I should, yes, I get.
We'll get started tomorrow.
Got a lot of work to do before budget.
Okay, Bridget, nice to have you here, you've got a lot of work ahead of you.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.